I'd like to call the Tuesday, May 6, 2014 Papillion City Council Meeting in order. Ms. Butler, would you please take the role?
Florence, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, due to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
That is correct.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. I don't think we have any presentations, so Mr. Hoynes, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I begin my report this evening with a quick update on the wellness initiative we started in the city on April 1st. We wound down the first month and we actually had a little recognition ceremony yesterday morning. I didn't, I wasn't able to capture the total miles for the month, but it was, the last time I looked towards the end was the collective group of 130 employees, it was over 16,000 miles in one month that you had collectively walked. Individually, though, and I think that this is what's kind of unique and important, I think it's certainly unique for a city our size, but 49 percent of the people that signed up, or 66 total people, walked over 10,000 steps, averaged 10,000 steps every single day of the month. That converts to about four and a half miles every day that 66 people did, or almost half of the people that signed up for the challenge. There were three, three people actually that averaged 20,000 steps every day for the entire month, no days off. One of those was one of your own, Councilman Jaworski. Applause. I don't think he got it yesterday. That's over nine miles a day, every day. And then there was one insane person that averaged over 40,000 steps, fact number's like 45. That converts to over 20 miles every day for the entire month, and that was City Engineer Jeff Thompson in there, so.[142.88][142.88](Applause). A million steps for the month. I shared with the other staff, my oldest son was home this weekend, and I was showing him some of the data, and he said, "You may get an award for being the fittest city, but you're going to get the, an award for the most anti-family city because there's no way those folks are spending time with their family if they're out walking that much." But we've got two more months. If you haven't signed up, still time, but if you see some of those folks, it's been an interesting challenge to see them get up and move around like that. Now, I certainly didn't enough before, but they're out and moving around. More, more serious things. 911. I'm pleased to report that the Sarpy County Board actually approved all four agreements this afternoon with the cities. You'll vote here in a few minutes later this evening on those. But I wanted to point two things out before you do vote on those. First, it'd be remiss if I didn't point out Carla Rue Piper and Staff Attorney Jessica Thomas. They were the brains behind this agreement. Don't let anybody tell you differently. They labored an intense number of hours, nights and weekends. They, I counted at one point, there were nine different attorneys reviewing these documents and feeding them back to them to try and get consensus from five other governmental entities on something that will set the stage for the next 20 years. And so it really would not have happened without Carla's leadership and Jessica's work on that project. And every other city, I got an email, she had two emails already today thanking the city of Papillion for taking the leadership role. So what does that mean? And really, what's the important things you're voting on? Because, trust me, I work here every day and I get confused. Why do we need four agreements? And what do they all say? The, at the 30,000-foot level, mayor and council members, what approval of those agreements by the board, potentially by you, and then any other city that chooses to approve it, is that in a little over three years, on July 1 of 2017, the issue of double taxation for 911 services will be gone. Cities will no longer be paying twice for 911 services. We will pay zero, city residents, or the city of Papillion will pay zero additional dollars to the county for 911 services. That's certainly something that was an objective. The second, and I think personally this is probably the most important thing, from a governance standpoint, there's a governing board that consists of five mayors and the county board chairman. And the authority for setting performance standards and the adoption of operational policies rests with that agency, or that board. That's a pretty substantial say for five mayors sitting in a room. And we'll begin that process here in the next couple of months, assuming that it does get approved. There's a lot of other issues on this specific agreements. The county board actually approved them all in one. I think all the cities, well, three, three of the other cities are hearing it tonight. Bellevue will come up next week. The final thing I would say, it is not a merger with Douglas County. That is a decision that is made by the county board to county board level. We have certainly encouraged, and in many ways think that still would be a very good idea, to pursue that merger, but that, just simply as I can state, it's not a decision that you have the ability to make at this point. You will never vote on that issue. But that's the high level of the 911 agreements and then the recognition of at least a couple of people that really did the yeoman's work of that. To conclude my report, Mr. Mayor, by reminding the council, we did in the Shadow Lake ribbon cutting is tomorrow morning, 10:00 a.m. If you have-
SAC.
SAC, yeah, I'm sorry, SAC. SAC Credit Union at 10:00 a.m. If you've not already responded to that, it's not too late. We would like to know if you could let Nicole know tomorrow if you're gonna, that you're gonna show up. That way we can properly recognize you in the group, but we wouldn't want to miss that. So that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover?
Second.
Second by Councilman Florence. Do we have proponents? I understand Sarah from Shadow Lake is with us. We actually got, I think, four of the agenda items are related to Shadow Lake. You want to give us a quick update and take time to maybe give a commercial?
Yes. My name is Sarah Herding. I'm with Shadow Lake Town Center. I'm the marketing coordinator, and we are here acquiring for liquor licenses for our summer concert series. Basically, our summer concert series, we hold them every year. This is our eighth year that we're going to be having it, and we estimate anywhere between 200 and 600 people each week. It's every Friday night from 6:30 to 8:30, and we incorporate the community and we incorporate all of our local merchants and retailers and restaurants to always try to participate in any way that they can. And so basically what we need is, we need permission to use, you know, the property which we, which we are, which we have, and then as well as the liquor licenses from you.
And the concerts start when?
They start on May 30th, and they go until August 22nd.
What time?
6:30 to 8:30.
At the Roundabout?
Yep, right in the center court down there. Our first band is going to be the Personix, if anybody knows who they are, and we're also going to be having a tribute to our officers and army and all of our specials, so.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks.
Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Did you want to poll one?
Yeah.
C-7?
I'm hitting the wrong one. Yes, C-7, please.
C-7's polled. Anything else? Please vote on everything except C-7.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item C-7, Resolution R140055. A resolution to award the concrete for the 2014 Concrete Street Repair Project to Shaw Mark of Omaha, Nebraska, in the amount of $298,999. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R140055?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion, Mr. Jaworski.
Yeah, some of the things that I brought up, Mr. Thompson already answered, but one of the things that is a little alarming to me was, I found out today that one of the gentlemen that's in this company is Navarro. So if that is the case, there needs to be a letter written to this company. I would like a letter written to this company stating the same thing that we did last time when they subcontracted out, that, that company will be responsible for their, for his work if it's not done to our satisfaction. Because I was a little worried about the ADA ramps. Mr. Thompson answered that for me because it looked like that was awful cheap, and I don't know how they could get it done like that, so. But that's what I would like.
Any, any additional comments?
We can go ahead and ask the contractor to provide us with some additional security that, that'll address your concerns.
Okay. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F1, Resolution R140061. This is a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a Class D liquor license for Walgreens Company doing business as Walgreens number 11355, 9512 South 71st Plaza, Nebraska, Papillion, Nebraska, 68133, and the manager application for Ann Wilds. I think I got it right. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Proponents?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific in Omaha. This is, was an annexation. You annex this property, they have to get a new license, so. They had a previous license, Class D license, but we're here just to comply with the law. And our manager, Ann Wilds, is also here if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote. I'm sorry. I closed the public hearing. I jumped on myself. I'm going to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R140061?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Any council discussion? Now vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next is item F2, Resolution R140041. A resolution to approve an interlocal, okay, before we start, this is the next four agenda items are all related to 911. So again, I just want to reiterate what Mr. Hoynes shared. You're going to be voting on an interlocal agreement to actually create the interlocal, then you're going to be voting on a member service agreement that creates the terms and conditions for the financial structure, and that carries us through June of 2017. The important part of that conversation is until June 2017, we'll still be paying at the same rate we pay today. Cities pay 22.5 percent of that budget, will continue to pay 22.5 percent of that budget. The critically important thing in this entire process then is July 1 of 2017, our 22.5 percent goes away, and the county picks up the full cost with some very minor exceptions. This gets into the whole double taxation issue we've been talking about related to 911 for the last five years. That's how long this discussion's been going on. Some people may question that double taxation, but the example I give, and it's a very real example, is if you live in a house and you call 911 for fire or EMS, and fire and EMS Papillion responds, you could have a neighbor literally across the street makes that same phone call to the same accident, talks to the same operator, and the same truck shows up. If there was a county, a city line down the middle of the street, you paid more for that phone call for the exact same people to respond at the exact same accident. So it is a very real issue that this resolves. So all county residents now, whether you're inside the city or outside the city, will share the same come that July 1 of 2017, so that's the important part. Then at that point in time, July 2017 is when the member service agreement, well, I take that back, the member, there's a second part of the member service agreement then that gives the operational control that Mr. Hoynes was discussing, and then come July 2017, when the member service agreement and that interlocal kind of goes away, there's a post-agency agreement that comes in place then for the next five, 10, 15, 20 years. Again, I think this is a good compromise. If you remember right, the county itself had two independent studies done. Both of those studies were showing that there is the potential for $2 million a year savings and up to like $20 million savings. This does not create the merger that realizes those savings, but at least if the county does not take action to realize those savings, we're not paying. So our cost goes away 2017. From that point, then the county can make the right decision for county residents, so hope that clears that up a little bit. So the first one, item F2, Resolution R140041. A resolution to approve an interlocal cooperation agreement with Sarpy County and the cities of Bellevue, Papillion, La Vista, Gretna, and Springfield to create the Sarpy County Public Safety Communications Agency for 911 communication services. There's our motion to approve Resolution R140041.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Mr. Glover.
I have a quick question. Why is this agreement taking place in 2017 when?
It was a negotiated point. The, a lot of discussion about what do we do? What's the form of this? Do we do a merger? Do we not do a merger? Do we do a partial merger? Do the counties just go to Douglas County? I mean, you've been following all that in the news. Kind of where this all came together is a point we could agree was, let's get this in place. The cities will agree to contribute for two more years, and then at that point, our contribution goes away, and that's when things, everybody started to come together.
And that's-
And it gave, it gives the county time to budget, and we've already been paying at this level, but, so it gives them time to absorb it and plan.
And that's all the cities in Sarpy County?
All the cities. We're all in the exact same agreement.
Not just Papillion.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. F3, Resolution R140047. A resolution to approve the members' service agreement between the Sarpy County Public Safety Communications Agency, Sarpy County, and the cities of La Vista, Papillion, Bellevue, Springfield, and Gretna. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R140047?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines.
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. F4, Resolution R140056. A resolution to approve the management agreement between the Sarpy County Public Safety Communications Agency and Sarpy County. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R140056?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Florence.
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Any proponents? Opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. F5, Resolution R140048. A resolution to approve the post-agency Sarpy County Communication System interlocal agreement between Sarpy County and the cities of La Vista, Papillion, Bellevue, Springfield, and Gretna. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R140048? Motion by Councilman Ingberg. Second by Councilman Glover. Proponents? Opponents? Council discussion? Mr. Jaworski.
I'd like to go on record too and thank everybody involved that they did a lot of work, the attorney, attorneys and everybody that got this going and got it in the right direction. I'd just like to say thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
I'll make the last comment related to it too. Again, it's been literally five years that this wraps up discussions. Should have been resolved three years ago. I really want to thank the leadership chairman, Sarpy County Chairman Jim Thompson did a lot of work at the tail end to bring this together, along with Commissioners Don Kelly and Jim Warren. I don't think we'd be where, where we are without some of their leadership at the county level. City administrators of Papillion, La Vista, Gretna, and Springfield spent a lot of time on it. Mark Wayne, county administrator, and Mike Smith, attorney for the county, did a great job pulling it together, but as Mr. Hoynes mentioned, it really was Carla Rue Piper and Jessica Thomas, the legal staff of Papillion. We owe you guys a huge thank you for pulling it together.[1123.83][1123.83](Applause). Next is item F6, Resolution R140057. A resolution to approve the First Amendment to the Ashbury Farm Subdivision Agreement. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R140057?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Second.
Second by Councilman Florence. Proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F7, Resolution R140062. A resolution to approve a temporary construction easement and permanent utility easement with SID 246 on Outlet A, Hillcrest Country Estates, generally located east of 66th Street, south of Cedar Dale Road, for the emergency water connection for SID 38, Highland Estates, Trailside Acres. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R140062?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is committee reports. Public Works, Mr. Ingberg, I'm assuming.
Unfortunately, yes. I just want to report briefly on three items we had on our agenda tonight. The first of which is the discussion of the potential of developing a arterial street improvement program, the ASIP, which, which the city of Omaha has it and other communities have used it as a, as a means to fund road development by revenue from the collection of fees from developers as they create SIDs. The expenditures of the funds go for projects that would be tied to our water six-year road program and allow us to more quickly provide the transportation thoroughfares that we need to do without going to the taxpayers and getting it. Long and short of it is, because it is a new fee, the committee recommended and decided to delay any, anything coming out of committee for 30 days for a couple of reasons. We want, we asked the staff to make some contacts with some local developers because it will affect them, to get some reaction. Developers in Omaha seem to, think it's a good program, but every city's different, so they're going to do that. And additionally, committee members have some different options for us to explore regarding the effective dates, the, the size of the fee, and so in the next 30 days, in addition to getting more information, committee members will be funneling any ideas or amendments to the city administrator's office to coordinate anything that might eventually come before the council if it does. That's about it for that one. The other thing that we discussed was the method by how we review, and up until this point, council has approved, and the consent agenda usually, we had two of them tonight, C-8 and C-9, where we officially, I guess you want to say, approved by vote the public improvements in the SIDs, where they do the awards for, for those public improvements. Point in fact is, the language exists today in our ordinance, although somewhat vague, for this to be accomplished administratively. The city asked the committee if we would be comfortable in doing so, and we recommend they, they switch to that method because it'll streamline the situation, and frankly, everyone else doesn't administratively but us, that we are aware of. We will still have it come before the council if, if it exceeds the framework of the, bid exceeds the framework of the SID subdivision agreements. So this will be the last time you see it on the agenda officially unless it does exceed those limits, and the committee fellow would be a good change. I believe that's all we discussed, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Do we have any comments from the floor? See, we got some people from the Leadership Academy. So you got to come up, introduce yourself, maybe what department you've been, you're in, how long you've been here, and maybe even something you've learned. For the, reminder to the council, this is the second round of the Leadership Academy, and we're what, three months in? Three months in, I think. So you've got to come up and introduce yourself. They're all staring at us.
Good evening. I'm Sally Jones, and I've been with the city close to 12 years, part-time, full-time for about two, two and a half years. I've enjoyed immensely the leadership program, the, just the opportunity to, to get an insight from the 17 most powerful people in the city, and, and you rarely get that kind of insight into what made them a leader and what's important to them, and, and it's really interesting and valuable to my career, I think, so I've really enjoyed it.
Thanks.
My name is Jessica Thomas. I'm the staff attorney here. I've been here for about, it'll be three years in October. I've really have enjoyed the Leadership Academy because I've gotten access not only to all the department heads, but to more of my fellow coworkers that I don't normally see walking through the administration building. It's also been a good experience to learn that just because you think you're going down one path, doesn't mean you're necessarily going to go that direction, so. And thanks for everything tonight for 911, I appreciate that.
Is legal life, is legal life in the city boring?
Oh, no, not at all.[1548.13][1548.13](Laughter).
Well, I didn't prepare a speech, so. My name's Tammy Phillips. I've been with the city for about a year and a half now over in the Recreation Department. I'm the administrative assistant for Lori Hansen. I joined the Leadership Academy. You know, I grew up here in Papillion, so been born and raised, went to school at Papillion. I don't want to say north because to me it wasn't north. I was the last graduating class, but it's been great. I mean, I've, I've grown up with, you know, Marty and Lynn coached me in soccer when I was a kid. I went to school with Bill's son. I did my internship here in 2007, so I got a little taste, and then I was fortunate enough to come back, so don't have quite the answers. It's these wonderful people that I'm getting to know even, even better, but it's been a great experience so far, and I'm really happy to be a part of it.
Thanks.
Hi, Parker Alba, Water Department. Been with the city since I was 16, working under Tom at the golf, golf course, and then the last seven years have been out at the Water Department full-time. I think one of the main things, I feel a lot like Jessica, is meeting everyone, getting to know different individuals, especially in the upper, upper areas of the city. It's definitely a, a big thing, and it helps a lot. Knowing who people are, what they do helps me out, helps, just kind of let me know exactly what everybody kind of does with the city.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, point out that Parker's real name's not Parker, it's Clive.
Cleve.
Cleve, okay. Cleve, and he was one that walked 26.2 with us too, so.
Well, I'm the last one. My name's Nick Leach. I've also been born and raised in Papillion. I've been with the Fire Department for a little over seven years now. Probably the most interesting thing, being born and raised here, you never understand how the city really works, and you're kind of learning that now that I'm in this Leadership Academy, and also it's interesting to find out how people got where they are by what they did in their past or what they didn't do. That's about it.
Appreciate it. Thank you all very, very much. Couple of updates. Attended, Ms. Hansen, the senior center had a volunteer appreciation lunch, which was great. A lot of volunteers gave a lot of time there, so it was very good, so thank you. Thank you for that. Lot of us around here attended the ribbon cutting for Premier Family Medicine up at Midland's Development on 84th and 370. That was for Dr. Strohmeier, and again, if you don't remember, he's actually serves on our Board of Health, and I think he's involved with sports medicine for the schools as well, so he really is the community's physician. So that was a nice celebration. Several of us attended the Midland's Hospital Evening with Friends. That was a fundraiser. The important thing about that, Midland's Hospital has done a lot from the area of quality, especially in heart health care. It's one of the, probably one of the best areas in the region now for heart health care and quality of service, but what the Evenings with Friends was, was a fundraising event to get 3D mammography for women's breast health, and it'll be only one of two hospitals in the region that have 3D, and they are detecting breast cancer dramatically sooner with that 3D. So Papillion and Midland's Hospital will be one of only two in the region for that, and I think that'll be in place by midsummer. Thank you all for the time at the City Council Retreat. I think that was worthwhile. We did that in 2010, and then did it now, and it sets the stage for a lot of what we do. Also attended the Schools Cooperation Best Partner Recognition. The city is a partner there through several different departments for a good number of years. Attended the Area Historical Society's Open House, the ribbon cutting at Goodwill, a lot of us were there as well, and- And we had the United Cities Meeting this week. The biggest thing there is starting, we talked about 911, talked about the ACIP fee a little bit that Public Works dealt with, and then just starting to think through the next legislative session, because summer's when that's coming up. So just a reminder to, to the council, if there is something that you believe we need to be looking at from a legislative perspective, now would be the time to be raising that, because we can get that into the United Cities. Also, we attended the Sarpy County Board Meeting today in support of the 911 resolution. Couple of reminders, tomorrow again is the SAC Federal Credit Union ribbon cutting at 10:00 a.m. We're into the season of DARE graduation, so if you've got an elementary school in your ward and you want to go to the DARE graduation, maybe reach out to Mr. Hallus, and he can let you know when those times are. Couple of reminders of citizen involvement we need. I think we'll be wrapping up over the next couple of weeks. We need a library trustee. I mentioned that at the retreat. I mentioned that we may need, in the fall, a planning commissioner from the ETJ, so if you know somebody that's interested in planning. And if you know of people within the city limits and interested in architectural history and preservation, we may have an opportunity for them as well. So be floating any of those names up of people you're aware of in your ward that want to be involved. Lastly, Parks Director Tony Gowan, if you know, lives in the city of La Vista, and is serves on the La Vista City Council. He has just recently moved outside of La Vista, so he has resigned his seat at the La Vista City Council, and they're having a reception for him tonight at the La Vista City Hall. So if you're inclined, after this, maybe run over there and thank him.